Select Boards Meeting, August 21st, 2018. In attendance, Chairman Deedy, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steiner, Cindy Pendleton.
Mr. Mogul will be here very shortly.
Doug will be here soon.
Stuck in traffic on the freeway. Good evening, folks. It is 6:03. Public comment is first. Does anyone have something they would like to say? Please state your name and address for the record. Wonderful. Moving on. Should we... Want to take him first, or do you want to do some other business?
Do you want to do the minutes and all that stuff?
Yeah, we'll do the minutes.
Yeah, because his hearing is 6:10.
Oh, perfect. Alrighty. So acknowledgement of payable warrant 1-9-0-4-B dated 8/13/18 and the amount of $345,840.74. Acknowledgement of payroll warrant 1-9-0-4 dated 8/20/18 and the amount of $226,783.11. Need a motion for regular section minutes, 8/7/18.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any executive section, ma'am?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. First up, we have this... So is this going to match my openness?
Yes.
Okay, let's see.
That's the hearing that you're not doing.
Yeah, I understand. This is my packet that I don't need. That you want back, right? I shouldn't need that.
No, this is just a minute's thing. Just approved.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so first up, the schools opening this year, folks. You want to get that press? You got that? Schools opening.
Aye.
We got it? Good? Alright. It looks like the staff opening day is August 27th. And I guess we're allowed to walk into that building again. I could have sworn I had a no trespassing order on me there.
Well, they want us to RSVP, so...
Oh, I'm not going.
I know Russ, you went last year.
I'm busy with the biggie. So Russ, if you have time?
That's Thursday.
Next Thursday?
This Thursday.
That's this Thursday? No.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes.
It's next Monday, right?
Yeah.
They want the RSVP by Thursday, so Cindy can get those.
I think it opens on the 29th, right?
Well, I noticed they no longer ask to us to speak.
You took care of that, didn't you, a few years ago?
A few years ago. Ever since then, they're very careful in their wording.
And that was under the new superintendent or the old superintendent?
That was under the new superintendent.
The last one wasn't inviting you.
The last one, they didn't invite us, but the new one said I could speak and then...
Once.
And that was it. I'd tell her I'd be happy to attend, and she wanted me to say a few words, I'd be happy to. I don't even know what the answer is.
Yeah, I would... Yeah, I'd keep that to yourself.
Don't hold my breath?
No. And we're in good working relationship with them, so don't screw it up.
Okay.
Alright, host agreements.
Yep, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, this is going to relate to the meeting that I had with the people that just closed on the land on College Highway near the Southwick Historical Society location.
Yep.
And they're going to be submitting an application to the planning board for the cultivation and growing of recreational marijuana on College Highway down the street from Nicholson Hill Road.
Right by Nicholson Hill Road. Oh, wow. Lot of action over there this year.
So there's going to have to be the elements of a structured host agreement.
Yep.
So I have that packet being developed for you. And I'm going to have town council structure out the process step by step, so both the... This entity will know and can agree with it with their attorney as well as our town attorney. So that'll be, you know, the next several weeks for that process to happen. But I did end up having them come through my office yesterday for me.
Wonderful. And does this run with the planning board meetings at the same time?
The development of it?
Yeah.
I'm going to find that out, but I think it can be done concurrently.
Perfect.
It's one of those things, we'll just determine who does their approval in the end. We can still structure them, we can still develop them, but maybe the finalization and votes and so forth to adopt them.
And it sounds like there's a...
But they're going to have to go through a process that's very highly regulated through the... What used to be formally known, they used to go through the Department of Public Health and now it's through the Cannabis Control Commission?
Right.
Because the governor created a different board and the legislature approved it. And so there's a whole other mechanism now that was different than when we sat down and had a discussion on College Highway for the former use of the bank.
Right. And the grow facility on Hudson Drive four years before that.
Right, and the planning board, there was a auditorium. So since then, so there's a whole other scheme of legislation that needs to be adhered to. So this new round of people will go through that new mechanism.
Wonderful.
And the way I read this, even though we do a host agreement with them, it still has to be approved by the Cannabis Control Commission?
No, I think there's been some stories where they would like to be the ones that stop... That are involved in it, but I think the MMA's position...
Yeah.
The MMA's position is that that should not be a finalized rule and regulation that would require it.
Okay, so they're asking us to write a letter?
And again, the package I'm putting together for you will be much more thicker than this, and it's going to give you a lot more background.
Okay.
The laws, the CMRs, the citations.
Attorney coil is going to fill this in?
I'll probably use him and Tom Reedy. Because remember, Tom was at the medical one?
Yep.
So he's very much up to speed.
Alright. He's probably the individual that should make sure that we do everything proper.
That's why we're going to have a checklist.
Right.
For our board and the...
Because I'm sure there will be questions in the community, and we want to make sure we have all the right answers.
Wonderful. Good talk. So I'm going to pass on the fire truck and the dump truck till Douglas comes.
Okay.
We pass on that. COA Kitchen Staffing increased hours.
Mr. Chairman, having read that over, I'd like to make a motion to table
Okay.
to our next meeting.
Very well.
So that I can get additional information from the Council on Agent Director.
Right. Alright, so you made a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'm giving you out of order just to screw you up.
And then I think it's 6:10, Mr. Chairman.
It is 6:10. Sir, how are you this evening? Come on up. We're going to read this out loud, and then we'll go from there. I've never done one of these before, so bear with me, alright? I'm going to butcher your names, just deal with it.
Won't be the first time.
And it won't be the last.
And it won't be the last.
No, sir. But it's all good, you know? Nothing bad, at least. Yet. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Manoli Pizzeria and Restaurant LLP, 515 College Highway, has applied for a transfer of the on-premise all alcohol liquor license, at 739 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Previously owned by EEG Corp., DBA Candlewood Inn. Property description, brick building located in the Caramin Roads Plaza LLP, westerly on College Highway. Premise consists of a kitchen, dining room, and one room for storage. Entrance on east and west side, enclosed patio, 489 square feet in the front of building, two more exits and entrances, and a unisex bathroom. You're cutting edge with that unisex bathroom, huh?
I already have the handicap bathrooms, so...
There you go. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from EEG Corp., DBA Candlewood Inn. Approval of new manager... Oh, I'm not going to... Go right ahead and say your name.
Emmanuel?
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel Anastasis?
Karith Anasopoulos.
Beautiful. Established entertainment license after the premises and established new LLC members. Time and date of hearing, August 21st, 2018, at around 6:10 in the Select Boards Conference Room, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. 01077.
You might have just missed one sentence, Mr. Chairman.
Applicant is requesting alteration of premises to add to serving area to be 24 by 38 with...
Okay.
Alright. Sorry about that. Like I said, I know I screwed up. Alright, so need a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Read legal ad, I did that. Tired of your way of the reading. We didn't waive it. Any paperwork entered for the record?
That would be letters received from people that could attend the hearing.
Is there anything in here?
I don't believe we received any written testimony to be added into the packet. Nope.
Boy, that's surprising, because you've got a lot of butters and no one wrote back. That's wonderful. Must be doing something okay over there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Or must be the boy doing the right job. That's probably what it is. Yeah. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I didn't want to say it, but...
No, I can. Alright. Alright, so give us a rundown of what you guys want to do.
Okay. My name's Anastasis Emmanuel Karith Anasopoulos of 5 Hummel Lane.
Yes, sir.
This is my son. Emmanuel Anastasis Karith Anasopoulos of 192 Berkshire Ave.
Wonderful.
Okay. We've been in this town nearly 40 years. I've been at Village Pizza about 37 years. I've always had a beer and wine license there. Never had any issues. You know, I have, you know, my roots here. My children have grown up here. And we would like to have a full liquor, so we could make it part of the restaurant.
Yep.
And that's basically it, you know?
So you're moving the hair salon to the right?
I'm moving the hair salon to the right.
Yep.
And I'm taking her space.
Sure.
And I'm putting a pad out back, because the beer is going to be in a cooler outside.
Yep.
And then we're just going to put it underground to the bar. So basically, what I'm doing is taking the hair salon, I'm building a concrete pad to put a cooler outside as of right now.
Wonderful.
And I'm going to have another entrance, separate entrance, and a separate exit from the bar area too. So there's going to be another...
Right.
Two more egresses.
And you go in between the restaurant and the bar?
And I'm going to put an opening between... Where you walk into the restaurant to the right, near the counter, I'm going to put one opening, so, you know, it'll be... It'll become one establishment. It's not going to be a separate entity.
Right.
It's going to be part of Manoli LLP.
Well, I don't want to look at this. Will there be seating on that side too?
There will be, yeah, the bar and some seating.
Some seating.
Yes. And we're adding the other bathroom also.
Oh, nice.
Considering, you know, we already have two handicap bathrooms.
But that'll be nice.
Yeah, you know what I mean? It'll be in the bar area, but they can access whatever they want.
Yeah.
And we also have another bathroom in the back for the employees, so there are plenty of...
Wonderful. Works out well.
Can I just bring something up? Is the cooler that you're going to put on the pad included in the serving area? It's not part of the serving area.
No, it's storage, the one that lies underneath and up in.
Right.
So they'll be never...
Yeah. Is it part of the new additional Swiffy? No, it's going to be a... It's within your existing Swiffy? It's... Well, it's going to be outside the cooler. But it's not a serving. It's not part of the serving area.
If anything, it's storage of alcohol, anything.
Right. That's what it is. It's storage, it's going to be, you know, whatever's going to be a storage room. But all they wanted was the serving area.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if you have to include the storage area.
But I did go through the planning board, I got it approved. I went through the building inspector.
So they saw the pad, they saw...
They saw everything. The building inspector already gave me a building permit. Excuse me?
Landis? You met with Lieutenant Landis?
He says he... Everything is fine and no problem at all. I've talked to him a couple of times, and he says he doesn't have a problem with it.
That's the newest thing now. You put the cooler out back, the regular walk-in cooler anyways.
Right.
But now you put the kegs in there, so you're not manhandling them through to put them under the bar.
Exactly.
They can change them in two seconds in that room.
Right. They're in that room, they're all tapped and everything. Instead of dragging them across the...
Much cleaner.
Right. And you don't have a kegerator, you know, everything's out back.
Looks like that silver cooler unit. So that's going to be the back of the building or the front?
In the back.
In the back. You don't even know it's there, just another walk-in cooler.
You have no clue. It's even there.
Yeah. You'll think it's full of steak.
Yeah.
Except it's got six locks on it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know?
I understand what you're saying.
And cameras.
Yeah, cameras.
Well, you know what happens? The ABCC guy comes out and checks it out.
And they look at that anyways, yeah.
So he's going to look at that.
Yeah.
Right.
The police.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Well, at least we can acknowledge it in the hearing.
Yes.
That we're aware of it.
We are aware of the storage and the walk-in.
And we can... When you open up, if anybody has a problem with it, I don't have any problem with it.
No, you wouldn't. You literally... He could put kegs out on his walk-in right now, and you wouldn't know. It's just... That's the way you're doing it.
It's the way of doing things.
Right. I'm just... All we're trying to do is in case they want that...
As far as your license goes.
Part of the description.
Well, that's... The description is, yes, we're putting a walk-in cooler outside in the back.
We're aware of it.
Maybe enclosing it to the weather, that's about it.
If somebody... It's a gray area.
Right.
Right.
But we talked about it, it's on tape.
Right.
We're all well aware of it.
Okay.
Right.
Wonderful. Any questions, sir?
Are we serving food over there too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I asked if he had seating over there. He does.
Okay. So the seating is for...
So the restaurant's on both sides now. Not as much seating on the other side, but there will be some.
And this is the golf courses liquor license?
The golf courses old liquor license. You've only been trying to get a liquor license for 10 years, no?
Tried longer than that.
Yeah.
When, let's... When Welch was a selectman.
Is he still alive?
Barely.
Barely.
Yes.
I'm going to tell him you said so.
That's fine.
That's okay.
That's probably one of the nicer things I said.
I tell him worse things.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's when Judy was the secretary.
Well, that's going way back.
Yeah. And we used to have the meetings at the school back then.
I can go back even further.
Exactly.
When your family came in to get your first liquor license.
You remember that?
The mayor of Hartford was your attorney.
Exactly.
George Atherton. George Atherton came in and represented you. And we were over at the old town hall. Where the police, bus garage.
Yeah, over there.
Everybody sitting at that table, and...
You remember that, huh?
The good mayor had to help me pronounce your name at the time.
Do you know that he... My father baptized him?
What?
God rest his soul. He... Yeah, my father was like six or seven, and he was his godfather, the mayor of Hartford. That way back, back in the old country.
But that was back in the 80s, when you guys...
Eighty-two.
When you guys started, yep.
I was still in high school, Russ.
I was the youngest selectman. I tell you, I was 12 years old.
I think I'm the youngest right now. No, no, Mogul's got me.
I came here... I wasn't even 22. I was 21 years old when I applied for that license.
Yeah. I remember that night.
Yeah?
What is it with you, Victor? All you guys came over young.
Yeah. Because Victor and I are the same age.
Their hair wasn't great, did it?
No, it wasn't. Not even close.
At least you still have color. He's pale as can be.
I know. Poor guy. I feel bad for him.
I know. No, I do, I do.
I like him. Don't get me wrong. I like Victor. Victor and I have no problems, you know? Yes.
He's got to get that looked at. Okay. Any questions?
Uh, no, I'm satisfied.
I'm very satisfied.
They have a great track record in the town of Southwick. Longtime resident, never had a problem, so no problem at all.
Thank you.
Alright. And you're going to become the manager, okay?
Yes.
Everybody's going to be tip certified.
Yep. They probably already are, right? Because of the beer and wine anyways.
Yeah, we can't do it. Get a license without that every year, so...
Yeah, and your Board of Health, just so you know, FYI, moving forward, Board of Health's going to want to get paid right away. Or we're not going to be able to issue a license. Not that you were part of the debacle, I was.
Yeah.
I paid the fine. Yeah. I was. I wasn't open, but that's beside the point. Alright, so I'm going to ask the audience, is anyone here in favor of this? Is there anyone here that would like to be against this or speak against it? That's close. Alright, we did the general discussion. I need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We had our general discussion. Change of manager. And the officers are going to be who? Officers and directors.
I'm the president.
Yep.
Vice president. Secretary.
Yep. No, it was just asked, so I got to ask you. It's all you. Good. Alright. So we close the hearing. I need a motion to change manager and officers and directors.
Uh, so moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set, sir?
Aye, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Have a nice evening.
Nice... Thank you for the history lesson.
No problem.
Yeah?
He remembers more than I remember.
That's wonderful.
It was a pleasure meeting the mayor. He was quite a gentleman.
He was.
Especially at your age, I mean, he must have been just...
I was 12 years old at the time, and he was, you know...
You always heard it was Hartford down the street. You never knew where it was.
I didn't know where Hartford was until he told me.
That's where I grew up.
Oh, does it?
Dog officer.
Nice.
Alright, thank you.
See you, guys.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
See you later. Charlie, thank you.
Wow. Alright.
And take the fire chief.
You want to do that?
Might as well.
Alright. Fire chief, come on up. We were waiting for Doug, but I'm not quite sure what happened. Your scanner didn't go off, right? Nothing?
No.
Good. That's good.
He looked good.
He looked good. He had flowers.
I swear to God, he left the flower shop and he was good health.
Alright.
I heard someone's phone ringing in the other room.
Unless he thought it was 6:30.
No.
No. I checked mine, I have nothing.
He has his mail folder and everything.
Yeah. Alright, sir. Oh, you got something?
Yeah, I got something. Yeah. I'm sorry for your... No, somebody else.
Oh, good. Jesus.
I saw somebody passed away, and I thought it was Doug.
The canine dog.
The canine dog.
The retired one passed away.
Jack's passed away.
Oh, you're kidding?
Yep.
How old is he?
In dog years or human years?
Nine years. Eight years.
Oh, I just saw him the other day.
Was he sick?
Was he sick?
Oh, he had a little limp going on in the back, you know, the back.
He has some medical issues, like every dog.
Oh, that's, that's just your bad. Well, a moment of silence next one. All right, so first up, sir, is, uh, we wanna talk about the fire truck?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so after much research to do.
Yeah.
We've narrowed down the, our, the model of what we're looking to ban, to buy.
Yep.
Um, which is basically just a complete spec and.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I mean, we only have one copy of it for now.
Got it, I'm good.
It's a seventy-foot, um, mid-mile platform. So we'll be adding the bucket on the end, so for safety, we'll be operating out of a bucket as opposed to off the ladder that we did with the old.
Yep. So is there a ladder going all the way up?
Yep, yeah, there is a working ladder all the way up as well.
Just in case, right?
So it's like Westfield's, it's got the tower.
Somewhere, yeah, lot smaller.
Right, just thirty feet.
It's gonna be red though, right?
Oh, yeah, that one's not red.
I wanted to wait, I had a whole list going for that.
I'm sorry.
You know, is it gonna be red, sir?
Yeah, it'll definitely be red and white like the rest of them.
I see this one's lettered, will that one be lettered, sir? I had all this all planned out, you ruined it.
Which letters?
Anything, anything, sir. I'd be thrilled with something.
I apologize.
Thanks, Russ.
So, as far as procurement, um, we've gone through the, um, Houston-Gallaston procurement group.
Yes.
Carl joined that, um.
Yep, the auditor approved it.
So it saved us going out to bid and actually saved us five thousand dollars from going through other procurement packages, so. Um, the big questions now are more from, um, is, do we wanna take advantage of some prepayment discounts? And then again, Carl is interested in the length of the notes and things like that.
Yeah, there's some issues that we, we have to make a series of decisions related to this acquisition tonight that'll be done through a series of votes, so that bond council will have direction. We'll note in our bonding terms, so it's all there on the agenda, the items that we have to vote on.
Okay, we need to do that tonight?
Yep.
Okay, that's right, all right.
Yep, yep.
All right. Mr. Steinhardt, why don't you talk us through this?
Well, I think the first thing we should discuss is the, um, would be the, uh, prepayment options. Uh, now, is this the updated number?
That's the updated, yeah.
Do you have extra copies?
I do not.
You were given, uh, a purchase price was originally, what, nine hundred?
Eight ninety-nine or something like that.
Eight ninety, right, so the chief, you know, he, he had to deal with a few more things being added on to it, so it came out to, uh, nine hundred and two thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. And of course, this goes against the borrowing authorization for both this and a pumper. That town meeting gave us, uh, the approval votes in May of one point two million, so we're doing a two-piece acquisition. Tonight, we're just dealing with the ladder truck. The pumper's gonna be done and the engine's gonna be done in the next month or two, and it's gonna be through a different procurement process.
Okay.
So the first thing you gotta do is to look at, look at whether or not you're interested in any of those, uh, prepayment options. Which means we have to go out and obviously do the borrowing sooner rather than later.
And what's the interest rate on borrowing the money?
We have it attached.
The, um.
Let's see, on the nine hundred and two, you have the.
Option four, I believe, was advised not to do by council, I think. Is that the hundred percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But here's your.
We have that here.
Yeah, you have it here on it, yeah. On a one-month note, and a nine-month note, for the principal cost of nine hundred, it would vary now that the, uh, the bid price is gonna be nine oh two.
Right.
And as you can see, depending upon which amount you end up prepaying, it gets you the estimated cost of borrowing and then the savings, and then he's looking at using that savings for the, uh, other loose equipment.
So what, do you have a recommendation between you and the chief?
Well, I think, um, town council, who's constructed the contract, um, his recommendation wouldn't be to go more than fifty percent. Because you are gonna sign a contract and you, you wanna make sure that you have that leverage at the end of it when it's delivered.
Yep.
When it goes through a shakedown cruise, and the chief and his, um, command staff and, uh, truck committee determine if there's any, uh, warranty issues, then you, you're gonna wanna make sure that you have those other remaining funds, no different than the retainage on a construction contract.
All right, so if we went with option two, that would put us less than fifty percent?
Yep.
So that's your recommendation?
And after everything, we save around fourteen thousand.
So you'd be looking at circling one of those.
Option two. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sir, how are you this evening?
Late.
It's all right. Mr. Morgan has just entered the building. Six thirty-two. We just bought a fire truck.
Another one?
Yeah.
Sweet.
All right.
Must've needed it.
I, you're the co-signer, so. It's all good.
Chief says we need it.
So we'll let you get to speed where the fire stuff.
We just made the determination of which prepayment option we did. We actually have to take a separate vote to award it to Soffton.
So we save fourteen thousand by the prepayment of just a little less than a half down with the interest rate.
And that's the council recommendation for the contract construction.
Okay.
When are we getting it?
They gotta throw.
Three hundred eighty-nine days or something.
Yeah, thirteen months is the guarantee, so eleven to thirteen months is the range. So, you're out. It's, it's not a demo per se, so it's.
No.
It's what we want.
It's custom made.
It's red.
And it's red.
Shocker.
And it comes with letters too. I checked.
I wasn't gonna go there.
Oh, we already did, Russ spoiled it. That's okay. All right, so next up.
So that's the first, the second decision's going to be the, um, the award to the vendor.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next decision will be to authorize the chairman to sign the contract when it comes in, approved to form by town council.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next decision is going to be the note duration. The note duration is how long you're gonna bond for it now. When you went through the budget process, you had looked at ten years, you have, um, modeled amortization schedules attached to the, um, to the back of your thing here for, you know, ten or twelve or fifteen years, but that's based upon an estimated nine hundred thousand, and your, your price of your award tonight is nine oh two, because the chief had to add something to it.
Yeah.
Lettering.
Lettering.
Lettering, yeah.
Yeah. So, and the important thing, the important thing about this note duration is it, it has to be less than the asset life and you're gonna take that vote next.
Well, the asset life is like a hundred years, right?
Uh, no, for equipment, it's, it's twenty, um, but, you know, you can.
Reality's twenty-five to thirty per NFPA specs.
Yeah, right, but the mass D O R.
Right.
Guidelines on the lifespan of an asset for, that fall into this category is twenty years at the length of it. So you can't make, you have to make sure that your, um, your note between your short-term borrowing, which you're going to undertake after tonight, and the conversion of a long-term note, don't combine to exceed more than the asset life.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Did bond council make a recommendation?
No, this is your determination. You're gonna, because once you make the decision, Doug has to sign it for both the fire truck and you'll make the decision for the dump trucks.
Cause I'm just the clerk, I think that sounds like the clerkly.
And that's why bond council drafted that for the clerk of the board.
Well, do you have a recommendation?
Well, you know, we, we went through this in, um, last fall, we spent a lot of time making sure that we were gonna, uh, go through the board, with the board and the finance committee to make sure that we were looking at the debt, replacing debt rolloff schedule, so we wanna make sure that, uh, um, you know, that you're gonna have probably twelve to fifteen years would be the number. Ten might be a little aggressive because you're looking at undertaking some other projects and some other buildings, and other, um, apparatus for public works, right, Joe?
Yeah.
We had a site visit with public works, so.
And those.
So you'd be looking at the twelve to fifteen year range, cause I think ten would be too fast. So you're thinking, so Doug is sensing fifteen.
I'm thinking fifteen, cause I wanna do roads.
You gotta do the roads and you're gonna have other capital projects and this, it's certainly not gonna come anywhere near the life of the equipment.
Well.
With the short term and the long term.
Today's, today's world, who knows on that, so technology's wonderful. But yeah, I would say fifteen, I'd be comfortable with that.
Let me get informed on the motion.
I'll second that motion then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's fifteen. And then the final vote would be the asset life, and, uh, Joe, you can pull that out for, to the board to look at, but it's, it's got the, uh, it's got the duration. And that is where.
On the last page?
Yeah, it's six A.
Yeah.
Item six A in your action, right here.
Yep. Six A.
Okay, so the fire trucks, um, you know, conservatively, meaning, you know, worst-case scenario, you wanna make sure that's, of course, gonna be longer than the note duration.
Right.
So that you would probably put for twenty years for both vehicles.
Right, for fire and dump?
Yeah, well, you know, the dump you could do for fifteen.
Yeah, I would.
Because we pay those af, off faster, and those are about, what, a quarter of a million a year, Bob? So your fire trucks should probably be twenty and your dump should be fifteen.
So moved.
So you'd fill that in, the board would, uh, sign it, or authorize it, and then the clerk and the board would, uh, sign, sign off on it, because that's gonna be an attachment that has to be certified for bond council.
So second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, none of this is really new for you guys, you've gone through the budget process, you went through the finance committee budgets.
Yep.
You went through the reconciliation process, so this is really just the formalities of going through to procure one of the three large apparatus, which is the ladder truck. He's gonna be back in front of you soon for the, um, you know, the pumper. And the dump truck was already ordered the week after town meeting, cause that takes six or seven months to get it in.
Yes.
And you had two of them that aren't working. So you'll have that by November, December, the dump truck.
Right.
Fully operational, ready to go out and plow and stand.
It has all its access.
And that went through, and it's gonna have all its accessories. And that also was awarded through a state bill.
Right. So we have enough money for the pumper, you feel?
Yep.
Okay.
With a little bit for loose equipment and shelving and things like that.
Right, and then that fourteen thousand's enough to give you what you needed, the money we're saving to, to outfitter, what you need? Great.
And do we have a plan to get from here to three hundred and sixty-five?
Five hundred?
Thirteen months from now?
As far as the ladder goes, the current ladder's being repaired.
Yes.
So the, um, the unit that, that got bent through the testing process was, um, they've sent two of them and the wrong one that came out both times, so they had to, because of its age, have the local manufacturer make it, um, but the, it's not that bad, really. It's, uh, but here again, they're making the parts for it, cause it's thirty years old, but we hope to have it back next week, so, um, and then it'll, we hopefully should be good to go.
And we'll have to test that before we get the new one?
That's included in the, this.
Understood. A year from now, as the new one's coming down the highway, we'll have to test the old one.
No.
Thank you.
No.
We don't wanna test that.
No.
As you recall, you authorized, we have, and Maya helped pay for it, the insurance company.
No, I understand.
Consultant that helped us do apparatus, bid specs and evaluated our fleet.
Right, that one's gonna go off into the sunset.
This was a standard test that needed to be done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the ladder test has to be done annually, and there's a certain one every five years, so this one will have its good test now while it's out.
Yeah.
Be safe, and that'll be the last time it gets tested.
And is that the five-year test or the annual?
Yes.
Oh, good, so when we sell it, we'll have a four-years lifespan left on that test?
In theory, yeah.
Well, it helps.
Yeah, cause we'll be selling that surplus.
Yeah, yeah, but the guy that wants to buy it's gonna look and ask about that test.
Yeah, the painter might want it for.
I was gonna say, the guy's painting houses, right?
Yeah.
And it's gonna go on a freighter to South America, probably.
Well, luckily, there's no room in front of the fire department to put it.
Did you need an authorization to sign the contract, cause we have to do that fairly?
The chairman is authorized.
You're already authorized, okay. I didn't know if you needed a vote, so, all right.
Yeah, he is, and you already took that vote.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Very good.
That's it.
I'd just like to thank the chief and his staff for doing the excellent job you did. Uh, this was a long, drawn-out process, so thank you very much.
I think we got a great product and be excited to, for a year to go by.
All right, do we wanna talk about the?
He'll be back in front of us in a month for the, uh.
While you're here, deputy chief's position.
So that job description went, was the, actually the original job description, and got sent to Fred, Attorney Dupre for, um, to put in his format.
Yep.
So the language really didn't change, it just changed to his format.
Okay.
To match his other job descriptions.
Right, all the other ADA formatted job descriptions, so do.
So everyone's happy with it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So the board needs to adopt.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
So a second to approve the.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did everyone else get two of them or just me?
Just you.
Ooh, I read it, boy. I see that.
Sign it, pass it down, please. Anything else for you?
Uh, obsolete equipment, I don't know if you can read for.
Absolute equipment.
Basically cleaning out the shelves for items of no value.
Yep.
He's gotta take it off his inventory, so he needs your permission to dispose of this, cause it's not gonna lend itself to the surplus sale that we're doing with all the other equipment.
So moved.
So a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't see it here.
It was in, there was a list in here.
Yeah, I did read it earlier, we'll get to it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yep. Okay, we tabled that.
You got our appointment?
Yep, Richard Listrow? Come on up. How are you this evening?
Uh, fine, thank you, how are you?
All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you.
Yep.
Selectman, and you called, you returned my call after my visit to, uh, to get the concerned people on Nicholson Hill a chance to speak about.
Absolutely.
The plan.
Group home.
Group home. After having read the Fair Housing Act and seeing it, it's a bit of a quandary, and I understand.
I haven't read it.
Well.
That's why I got you.
And, and the case law.
Yeah.
That it doesn't look good as far as, they pretty much have their way about when they wanna do it, they can do it. But, but what concerns us, and, and I don't know how we address it, is we have a very nice neighborhood. And.
So TJ Welch moved then, you guys were, you guys were a nice neighborhood, but continue.
Exactly. And, uh, it's a nice neighborhood, the houses are, uh, you know, all five hundred thousand-ish homes.
Is that a scenic road too on top of that?
Yes, it is, it's a scenic road, and we're concerned that the houses are gonna suffer, it's got nothing to do with the people that are going in there, it has nothing to do with their rights, it's about the value of our houses in the future.
Yep.
I have toured some of their other houses that they have built, they all look the same. The one in Sheep pasture road does not look like a residence, it looks like a motel. It looks like a facility, if it had more doors in it, it would look like a hotel. It will not fit in our, and it has a rental home next door. The one on Doug Road looks the same, it's the same building. The houses next to it have mattresses thrown in the front yards. Appears to be Reynolds, but I don't know.
Yeah.
But the issue is, it's not the same kinda neighborhood, it's on, practically on ten two oh two, it's behind, uh, the, a church, Jehovah's Witnesses Church.
Yeah.
The one that they built out in, uh, why Ben? Same thing. Across the street is a Kozinski, is Kozinski's, uh, what do you call it, uh, fruit market?
Right.
It's not a neighborhood, and therefore, if they're gonna be building the home, we don't like the design, we want it to look like a home. In many instances, these homes have been built, uh, they have been converted homes in neighborhoods.
Right.
Well, those houses blend in with the neighborhood.
Sure.
This thing doesn't, all right? And it's. This house does not blend in with the plan I'm building.
Right.
And it's, uh, you know, for a lot of, for a lot of different reasons, uh, all concern, all around the appearance of the home, we're against it.
Understood.
Can I say stuff to her? Is this working?
Okay, we'll get to you. Okay. And as you did your research, you found out what?
Um, that there's been losses, there's been losses left and right, uh, on, that have brought, been brought up, uh, and always ruled in front, for the fair housing, that they have the right to live pretty much where they want to.
Right.
That's not an issue.
No, and, and I get that, I, I do.
And, and it, and part of, uh, what was discussed is the, I guess they come up with the, the number that if it's six people in, in the home, then it's.
Changes everything?
It changes everything, it's a business.
Right, and they're at four, I think, I got the same.
Yeah, it, it appears that be, that's the mold of all the different ones.
Right.
Uh, a friend, a very good friend of mine has a group home next to him in Westville, and it's not a problem, but it's just a residential home that they bought when it came for sale.
Right.
And it looks like it belongs on the street.
Right.
Uh, it's on a slope, it's gonna be, we're actually looking at the back of the house that's facing the street, it's two stories, it's a walkout basement, what's it gonna look like from the backside? It's even gonna look less like a house.
Right.
All right?
Understood. I don't know as this board what we can and can't do for you, I mean, if, if, if I was building a house on your street, would you be allowed to tell me what I could build? Probably not, and I, and I'm with you, I'm just saying.
But the zoning rules would apply against it, you, if you were building a home on my street, you'd have to pay attention to the zoning rules, they don't.
Understood, but I, I believe I could still build that same ugly house with or without the zoning rules, cause I don't think you can tell me what I can build. I think the height you can, and, and there's certain, you know, geometry issues I'm sure that play in, but overall, if I wanted to build something ugly, I probably could. Not that that's the answer, but I hear you, I do hear you.
I hear you.
You know, and I, and I wish it was sixteen miles back in the woods and no one saw it, but apparently that's not the case, it's closer to the front, right? You can, it's visible, do you think it'll be visible from the road?
Well, uh.
Depending on the season.
Fairly, yes, depending on the season. If, if they don't tear down the buffer.
Right.
All right? Uh, the buffer and the trees in the buffer should screen out the house.
Yep.
As long as there's leaves in the trees.
Correct.
As soon as the leaves are off, it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb.
Right.
All right? Uh, with the exception of TJ, which has the honor of looking up the driveway, so he'll always be able to see it, which is, he's got this.
There's so much I could say to that, with any luck, he'll be living there in a few years, but anyways, yeah. You know, I think that's his address anyways.
Yeah.
Understood. Um, all right. Name for the record, please?
Michael Govey, twelve Nicholson Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
My house is directly across from the eleven where this is gonna be.
Okay.
I've looked at some of these other houses that they've built, these are commercial buildings, this is not a commercial street. I know what they say it is, but it's a commercial-looking building.
Yep.
If you drive by the one on Sheep pasture, it has lights all around the perimeter of it on the building, they're on twenty-four hours a day.
Right.
It has a parking lot in the back, not a driveway, it has a parking lot that the, Conservation Commission is having a problem figuring out where all this water's gonna go, and they need to have more work done. Their plan is to direct it into the stream that's in the wetland, and that stream goes under my front yard.
Right.
Now, my front yard already has a drainage problem, but I have no problem with water in my basement. Now, if you start dumping a lot more water into that stream, what do you think's gonna happen to my property? What do you think's gonna happen to my property value when someone comes up to look at my house and looks across the street, there's a parking lot with a bus parked in it? Are they gonna give me fair market value for my house? Bullshit they are. This house is ruining my right to live there, and I've been paying taxes on this for over sixteen years. I worked my ass off sixty hours a week to be able to afford that house. And now some company that makes thirty-three million dollars a year is gonna put it there because they feel like it. You go down the College Highway, everything on College Highway is for sale. Put it down there. There's one at the end of the street that's twelve thousand dollars cheaper than the one he's paying for. Put it there. Why screw up my house? That's my retirement. I have nothing else. I have no pension, I have no savings, everything I have is in that house. And these people are gonna come in and put an office building in front of it and say, "You have no rights." That's bullshit. That's not American, and that's not democratic. We're here to tell you that this is not acceptable on our street. If they want that house there, build it exactly like all the other houses look on the street. Put it the same way, no parking lot, no perimeter lighting. Put it in like that, no problem. But if you're gonna put this office building in there, you're gonna have a problem. Because I am not gonna stop here. If I have to hire an attorney, if I have to go on TV, I gotta go on Facebook, YouTube, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna make this ugly.
But you're right, you should. If that's how you feel, go right ahead. But once again, as this board sits here, as he's already said, we, we don't have a magic wand to take care of this tomorrow, you know that.
You can make recommendations, you can talk to the people who are doing this, it's a, it's a large company.
Yep, absolutely, I can.
You people are elected to speak for us and help us.
Yep.
We're asking you to see what you can do about it. Could you talk to them and say, "Hey, here's a lot right here." Buy this.
Let me tell you, sir, I'll gladly reach out, and I'll spend hours on the phone and even meet with them without a problem. Doesn't mean you get what you want, as you know. But yes, will I spend that time? Sure, I will.
We appreciate that.
You know, and I, and actually today I already made two phone calls to those folks. Discussing trees, if shrubbery, if there's anything out there that can or can't fix things. The questions that got brought up to me after last night's evening was the trash. It's contracted, so there won't be trash sitting there piling up.
There won't be a dumpster?
I don't believe they'd use a dumpster, no. And then I said, "Well, what about the maintenance?" Because Mr. Welch is, um, I'll go on the record, maybe it's his wife, I don't know. Is very concerned about the lawn, because apparently she's out three times a week mowing. Mowing their lawn, and as TJ nicely tells me, going through mowers. So. She's very concerned about the appearance of the outside of that facility, and since I had that on my mind, I brought that up, and that's a contracted mowing service that will be mowed regularly like everyone else in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, so, so I, I have done some of that for you. Not, I didn't ask them to please move. I don't think I can, but I gladly ask them to, sure. I'll gladly ask them, there's a lot down the street for twelve thousand less, and maybe they'd be interested, but who knows what the, I think we all know what the answer's gonna be, but I'll gladly ask.
Maybe you could ask them. Is, uh, this gentleman, I think at one point had, uh, said to one of the people on the street that this is a six-hundred-thousand-dollar project. As well as the lot, it's like a hundred and twenty.
Sure.
So for seven-hundred-and-thousand dollars, they're gonna house five people? How many houses in this town can you buy for seven-hundred-thousand dollars? You could house a lot more people.
You could.
Is there something else behind this that they need to spend all this money on a, an office building?
Well, as you know, sir, as we get older and the disabilities creep into our lives, you know, that average house, maybe his house isn't one-hundred percent disability, ready to go. You know, maybe you're gonna have to widen your doors or put in that goofy.
No, no.
That goofy tub with the door on it, you know, I'm gonna have to, I live on a, I don't live on a ranch, so I'm gonna have issues down the road. Um, so when you, when you unfortunately put out those big price tag numbers, in today's world, that's probably what it does cost to have four bedrooms that are ADA compliant with X amount of restrooms and everything else they do.
On one level.
And on one level, right, right. It's cheaper to go high than it is to go wide. You know, so, yeah, I hear you, seven hundred grand, you could buy a much better-looking, bigger house in Southwood. Doesn't mean it's, fits their, their needs.
More people.
But then you start tripping stuff like this gentleman had said.
No, what I'm saying is, for that kind of money, you could buy multiple houses.
Oh, sure.
They used to make, that's what they, that was what they used to do.
You know, you buy a house in a neighborhood, even on our street.
Right.
And it looks like everything else in the neighborhood.
Completely understood. I understand your, your.
So it makes me think there's more to this. I mean, this is a big company.
A big business.
A big, a very big business.
I don't think it's the acquisition cost that is what drives it.
No.
I, I didn't study enough to know, but it seems to me it's, I mean, the company makes its money by housing these individuals, right, and so they, the acquisition cost is not the big piece, because it's over a long period of time that they get a monthly amount of money, and to Joe's point, a ranch or a single-story facility to house four, they can't go up because they, they're not gonna put elevators and so on and so forth in, so they'll go wide, and that's why they get such a large footprint, and the footprint drives the cost of construction. And plus all the other accoutrement that they need to put in, but that's probably why. Yeah, you're right, they did use to buy existing single-family homes. And, and they still do, because I think we've had a few in the last couple of years in our town. Right, where they've done that, but it was a different clientele. Same general principle, but the clientele's different. They could move up and down the stairs easier or whatnot. That's all I can say about that, and, you know, Joe's right, I'll be glad to pitch in wherever we can as far as reaching out and see if, if there's other, other places in town that might be more enticing cost-wise to this, this company or not. And I don't know what's driving this particular location for them, I don't know.
Don't, don't be misled, however, this is a business.
Absolutely.
Call it a non-profit.
No doubt.
Thirty-four million dollars, forty homes.
Yep.
Right? And, and by the way, we're all paying.
Oh, absolutely. We're the ones that are paying for it. For a second, sir, I get it, yeah, I know what.
Yeah. And we've been paying.
Oh, yeah, and we'll continue, it's how it is, and you know, you know, and the Fair Housing Act, and when I was on planning this, I got an education on that once, and what was the other one? The Dover Amendment. That's the other fun one that comes into play every now and then with these things.
Who knew that one?
Uh, don't even. There's a lot of case law around that, too, as far as when and you can and can't override zoning. The Dover Amendment is basically a school, a church, or any kind of educational institution override zoning in a town. They could just do whatever, pretty much do whatever they want.
Well, we had that discussion last night in conservation.
Comprehensive permit.
Because there's, there's one theory that's a commercial building and they have to apply by this, but then the other theory is it's a single-family house, and they apply by this, so they danced around that last night.
And it depends on the age of the people that are living there, and if they start running classes in there, they call it semi- educational, and the Dover Amendment applies. I mean, I don't wanna get into that now, it's a, it's a whole area of legal thing that, it's not my thing, and I didn't say it in Holly Express. But, you know, where they can do pretty much anything in a zone, under those, those, uh, those acts, so, you know, the, but, this is not our first encounter with these folks. We have a good relationship with a lot of businesses that do operate in our town, that, you know, they wanna be good neighbors, we'll, we, you know, and we can talk to them on, and in that aspect of it, too, because this may not be their last project in our town. We've had conversation, you know, to tie it back, when I was on planning, you know, we had conversations with developers when things weren't going right. And we said, "Look, if you ever hope to develop in this town again as smoothly as this has gone, you need to fix these couple of bumps in the road." We can have that discussion with this developer company as well, and say, "Look, and we understand where you're coming from, this is the feedback we're hearing from constituents, what can be done." And whether it's, "Hey, here's another place on College Highway that someone's done the legwork for, this is enticing, better, worse, cheaper, faster, better, I don't know." But, you know, and have that conversation as well. This is a two-way street.
It is. Anyone else? Sir?
Walter Peter, I live on this street. I bought a beautiful lot, two thousand and two, built a house. I built the stone wall by myself to be one more. Because it's senior area, so I wanted everything to look original and nice. I bought extra lot next to it from Mr. Waterman. And this lot is neighboring from this lot eleven, mine is now number nine. Now, I'm confused, because they are trying, like, saying, "Single family," and it's business. It's confusing for me totally. First of all, they should honest, you know, explain it to people as it should be. Secondly, I, my property, I am, I was planning to sell it, but now I am in jeopardy. So, if I ask you a question, let's say, since I cannot sell it as a residential, because next it's business, I would have to use it, you know, let's say I would build business the same house, run the same business, would town of Southwood allow me to do it? I, I hire professionals, I will, I love senior citizens, and I would be rejected in every offense. Because when I went to Mr. Benetti in two thousand and three, and I presented my plan, I, I asked him clearly, you know, is it residential, or is it business, or mixed, or whatever? He gave me a map and said residential. So that's why I invested in it. Because I was in Palmer, I was in Belchertown, I was all over with my wife for two years. Luckily, I found this lot with Mrs. Tanga York. Their daughter had it, but daughter was pregnant, they couldn't build, so I was, came on spot and I got it. But I mean, we would like you to understand that, I can see you understand that. And do something, push somebody, because for me, like, we're helpless on this street. Because we are like force, hey, I can see now, people are just coming and doing whatever, they, they're surveying, construction, everything is ready, nobody even asks a question. We had meeting, and I saw, we didn't have too much to say, and, you know, somebody said, "Oh, we can do nothing, because it's government or state or..." I mean, it's, it's not right. It's something wrong here. And, and it's, and it's hurting.
Thank you. And of course, they fall under the, the theory that it's a single-family home. And, and you're right, it's commercial, and you're right, it's commercial, no doubt, we know that. We know it's a big business, thirty-something million a year, but that's, that's the, you know, they're not smarter than us, but, but boy, they've done their homework. They, they do this everywhere, there's how many in this town, I think, four or five?
More than that.
More than that.
Right.
That I'm aware of, there's four or five, apparently there's probably more.
Different companies.
So.
Different companies.
In all different companies, and you're right, some have the younger folks in them, and the cruisers there the other day. There's no doubt about it, and there's some with the older folks. You don't even see them. Like you said, you have a neighbor or a friend, he doesn't even know they're there. And that's great, it is, I'm sure he's thrilled that that, that's the case, I would be. Versus the fifteen-year-old.
They didn't knock the house down, they put up a.
No, no, they used what was there and made it work.
Facility.
Yes, understood.
Yeah, they used what was there, I know their home.
So Mr. Benetti, believe it or not, which I don't believe, he was actually right. Because we've all had different dealings with Mr. Benetti.
Rest his soul.
Rest his soul. And, um, and he's right, it is our residential, and, and yes, under this loophole of federal government or whatever you wanna call it.
Let me finish once, and.
Yes.
This can be done in different ways.
Oh, can be done anywhere else, but, but next to you. Understood.
No, not that it's hurting me personally, but I mean, it shouldn't be mixed with it. It's beautiful nature.
Yeah.
I have little deer bones, that's why I don't cut half, like, one acre behind.
You let them sit there and run.
All the nature, bluebirds, everything is. This is disturbing, this is totally new environment. I'd be out of here, honestly.
Right.
I'm selling it, I'm, I'm gone.
Understood. Thank God you guys like Mr. Welch, huh? Because he just built, he's the last house built up there. Well, there's two built, him and, um, the wood guy built, too. The Rose are built.
Probably the Rose.
And they're adjacent to you guys or close by?
The one, the Rose is behind me, TJ's two houses up.
Two houses up. Haven't been up there in years, since they paved it, that debacle. And it is a debacle. It's not finished.
If it wasn't pa, if it was paved, if it wasn't paved, they probably wouldn't put the street, they probably wouldn't have.
Put the house there.
If it was still dirt drawn, so.
Yeah. Well, maybe another five or six or ten years, we'll finish paving it, but it won't be next year. But I did mention it, it is on the list, I did actually see it, like, within twelve.
You know.
So.
And, I don't know if she's gonna speak, but Mrs. Scowra, who's here, was the family that originally owned the land.
All the land up there?
The Watermans.
Yep.
And she still has multiple lots up there, and she's got the concern about the value of lots.
Sure.
And also.
But she's not selling this lot?
But, no, she, she already, she had already sold.
Sold this lot.
Lot, and the person she sold it to bought it. But there's an emotional attachment for it, it's a farm.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, the family farm.
Yep. Understood. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah. Jim Marie, two Nicholson Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
I live on.
Where's that, where's there?
Two. I live down the end of the street that's still yet to be paved. So I wanted to make that known also.
Oh, absolutely.
So I just wanted to voice my support for my neighbors.
Sure.
Don't agree with the commercial property going in, clearly residential street.
Yep.
Um, I moved in with my young family, a disposable family, I have a ten-month-old and a four-year-old, and often think about moving, really, if this goes in, it just doesn't seem like the kind of thing I want on my street, just because of the fact it is not a residential home. You know, I look forward to my children playing with other children on the street. Not having to avoid the van, you know, if it comes four times a day or whatever the case may be. So, just all these things, I'm here to support my neighbors, and, uh, anything you guys can do on our behalf?
Understood.
I voted for you, and we'd like to see something done. Thank you.
Do you want your street paved, or you like it gravel?
I wanna pave it.
Wanna pave it.
Yeah, because that would make paving my driveway make more sense.
Yeah, I just wondered.
It, it's funny.
Back in the day, there was a lot of discussion, more than this, over the gravel road.
It's funny. Uh, the people who didn't wanna pave have all moved out.
Have they?
Yeah, they really, it's new.
Yeah.
You know, but.
Or was it didn't, I'm sorry, didn't wanna pave, correct?
Didn't wanna pave, have all moved out, the end of the street, that end of the street, which is the flat end, didn't have to deal with the hill.
Yeah. Well, we didn't finance enough money for that debacle to begin with, or it would have all been paved.
Ninety, it was a chapter ninety, the funds ran out, at least according to Denise.
Ran out long, but it's been a mess.
It's a lot of dust flying, that's the problem, because people go faster and it's paved.
Right, and then they hit that.
They hit this dust, and so washing windows is more often, you know.
Right.
Inside is more dusty.
And there's usually a few good potholes right where that transition is, I hear about those all the time.
Growing up here, I remember the street being a dirt road.
Sure.
So I remember looking up, and I'm like.
Where's that go?
Where's that go? Yeah, because I, you know, I live only a couple miles away, my parents still live there.
Yep.
But now it's nice to see it as a neighborhood, I have some great neighbors, and, uh, wanna keep it that way.
Okay. Alright, anyone else?
Uh, I just, thank you for your, the time.
Yep, understood.
And I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, tell you what our concerns are.
Yep.
And I hope you can do some for us.
Well, I, I gladly reach out, which I don't, you know, as you can tell, my mouth gets me in trouble all the time, so I, I have no problem.
I know what that's like.
Continuing on. Sir?
No, I was just gonna say, the legislation that was approved is, in my, my opinion, very poor. They are running a business. I can, all I can tell you is, we had an incident with another home in town. Uh, we did sit down and meet with them. Uh, it wasn't this company, it was a different company. But they did try to do some things to appease us. You know, putting up barriers and buffers and, and taking care of outside alarms and things of that nice, and getting rid of the dumpster, and going to barrels, so that particular company, sitting down with them, having a conversation, it worked. And, uh, I, I, as the chairman says, we're gonna reach out to them, we're gonna have a frank discussion with them. Obviously, we, we can't force them to do anything, but, like Mr. Mogul said, if they wanna do any further business in the town of Southwood, they don't, they don't like controversy, they don't wanna see their name in the newspaper. Uh, like that gentleman said, they don't like that.
No.
So, I think that if, if, hopefully, we can reach out to them and get them to do some things. I, I don't know if we're gonna get them to change the type of building they're building. But, but at least maybe we can do some buffers.
Screen it, something, whether it's berms or whatever.
Right, 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 and make it look like it is part of the, of that neighborhood. And also address concerns of traffic, you know? Because of the other group home, we did have an issue with traffic, but you know what? Putting the cruiser out there a few times and giving a few tickets out, it solved a lot of problems. The people working there learned very quickly that we were serious, so. So, I, I understand where you're coming from, because we looked at this issue in the past, I don't like the legislation. I understand trying to help these people, but, but I don't like the way it was written, these people are abusing it, they're using it as a business, they're making a ton of money off of us.
And as I understand, and as I understand, that the nursing homes are suffering as a result.
Oh, absolutely.
There isn't any doubt in mind.
They're pulling people, they're having problems.
Right. And it, it's, it's just a financial burden on all the taxpayers, but, but enough said. We are gonna try to do whatever we can do.
We'll reach out, we'll definitely reach out. I'm gonna call tomorrow and see if I can get an appointment with them, and I'll sit down and share your thoughts, my version.
Some people like your version with more swearing.
What I was just gonna say.
Even you'll be like your version with more swearing.
I'm being nice here, I haven't sworn, I'm just trying to behave.
We've already done that.
Yes, we're outside. We've come to terms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, folks.
Chief of Police. That's what I did with Riccardi when I met him.
You brought him, would you?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked about traffic, we talked about noise, we talked about.
That's okay, but, see, I'd rather him in the corner, and they go, "Who's that? Well, that's Mugsy." I get more with Mugsy than I do Chief, Chief Bitch. Was that, that's, that's Mugsy.
Jersey, yeah, Mugsy Jersey.
Whatever, whatever. Jersey Mugsy.
He got a point, and it is, it's a shame, you know, and, you know, you look at, you know, when you're gonna move somewhere, you know, you do your homework, right?
Oh, absolutely.
You look at the map, you, it's R forty for a mile around me, there's no cement plants, no railroad tracks, there's no, you know, airports, there's no, whatever, munitions dumps, right, nothing. And then, you know, so you make that investment, and then something like this, or even with the Dover Amendment, comes into play, and it, it subverts, it subverts zoning, which was put in place for exactly this reason.
Can it be resolved with, with new legislation in the form of a design bylaw by the planning board?
I don't think so. The Dover Amendment, I mean, I, I mean, I got my lesson on the Dover Amendment, right?
It would even exceed that.
I, the only thing I think you really can't, I would think that you could have a safety discussion if you wanted to go fifty feet, right, and it exceeds, the reason we have whatever our thirty-five-foot zoning was, because that was the ladder truck, right? So that's why we have a thirty-five-foot limit, right?
Right.
If, if someone wanted to exceed that, you would, you would start to have a conversation as to, you know, that, that's not a, that's a safety issue. That's not even around the zoning aspect of it, but everything else was in play.
But then, like, you'd need an elevator at that point.
But, I mean, right, but, but even that, I, I'm just saying, on the outside, but if someone came in and said, Dover Amendment, we're gonna build a school here.
You're gonna smile.
Done. It's done. And, you know, you know, it's one of the arguments for, you know, and it, it, it's one of the arguments for, you know, buying in, in like Flex Residential, right? Because you know, but even, even then, because the lots are smaller, and so that, this type of thing may not be appealing in that zone. But people that wanna be on a bigger lot, and unless you're willing to, you know, really buy your own buffer, you're exposed, and it's a shame, because it, it's not right. You know, it's, it's not right how it is, that's why you have zoning, it's to provide those levels of protection. And, you know, when the, the feds come in, or even the state can usurp And, you know, when the, the feds come in, or even the state can usurp local control like that, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's not a good thing.
Based upon state legislation.
Right. And this isn't, it's just not a discriminatory thing. This is, you know, it's, if it was in character and you go, okay, right, you know, I, I personally don't have a problem with the van. Like four trips in a van, that's less than your, your average person does running the kids to ball practice and this practice and work and back.
As long as it's, they're abiding by the speed limit, which was, we found out with sometime the.
But staff members.
Right, we're in a hurry.
Are in a hurry to get to work and a hurry to leave afterward.
Yeah. But your, but your remedy is the quick fix for that, right?
Right.
You put them out there once a year.
Right.
Bang out a few tickets, it's all done.
But that, that's why I took Chief Riccardi with me.
Yeah, understood.
Chief and Mugsy.
Yeah. Wonderful.
I'm gonna take off. Do you want, you guys want his email address for Barker?
Sure, you can just, do you want to text it to me?
I'll text it to you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay. That's Salumi Construction. That's the, uh, the builder of the facility, or apparently they do the whole process. So, he was at Conservation last night and reached out and said, do you mind if I come? I said, no, sure.
And hopefully you heard what we're saying, right?
Yeah, oh, he heard me loud and clear.
I've heard that name before. He's been around. I, I didn't realize, but yeah, yeah, but I, but Salumi wasn't in there.
No, no, but that's what generated this.
Oh, right, but, you know, Salumi's got other projects in our town.
He has. He's, uh, Salumi's, um, he's not a resident, but boy, he may as well be at times. Right? He had something to do with the American Inn and, and quite a few.
Oh, yeah.
Big projects here. Yeah, very respected name. All right, so to get you up to speed, we did the high school, if you can make it, for their staff opening. I'm probably not allowed to speak. You're probably not, maybe you can speak.
It was a big hit last year. Russ can do it this year.
Yeah, they don't want us speaking, they said. Uh, we talked about the host agreement. The, uh, host agreement was to do with some of this marijuana stuff coming through. Mr. Steinhardt is on top of it. Fire truck were done to prove the deputy chief was basically just a revamp of paragraphs, same BS, so that's all set. Good. Kitchen staffing increased hours, we table till next week, and now we are on the Sodom Mountain Campground Automatic Amusement License.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hundred bucks, wow. All right. That is all set, and we're gonna reaffirm the reserve fund transfer for the amount of nine thousand eight hundred for the old cemetery removal of trees.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. And we're gonna reaffirm PV, PC, CD, BG, invoice number twenty.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, can you approve the Sunday Entertainment too?
Motion to approve Sunday Entertainment for the Sodom Mountain Campground Facility.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Don't we need it for that one? You don't need it for the other one? The other one's more quiet, the other facility. Okay, what is? There's two, right? They have two. Sodom Mountain.
Oh, no, I thought you meant cemetery. I thought you were making a joke.
No, no, no. I didn't say cemetery, did I? I might have said cemetery.
Yeah, but it was the next thing.
Oh, no, he's talking about the campground.
I was talking about the other campground, right. No.
I guess it just wasn't on here.
Well, they probably don't, that's the older.
The one down south.
No, no, we're talking about where she put the folder.
Yes.
Two items she did.
Yeah, we got that.
We got that.
We got that.
Yeah, the weekday and Sunday Entertainment, but the other place, I don't believe it.
I don't, it's the, more of the older crowd goes there. I don't think there really is any of that. I don't think they even have a clubhouse or, or a pool or anything over there.
They don't.
They don't. Thank you. But it is close to the cemetery.
I, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Fox, I understand you're thinking about your future and it's probably six feet under. I get it. So, it's all good.
You did that.
And if you had a four lot or a six lot, a six lot might change things. All right, so we're done with that. We did the PV. PC.
We're putting cremated remains in, you can fit even.
You probably even fit more. Hey, here's the Southwick Fire Department.
We did that already.
I know, I just gotta pass them over. All right, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee, we need to appoint.
We have some more, uh, people that would like to, uh, join, Mr. Chairman, and I'd make that motion for the following people as written.
As written.
So, second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, am I doing okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all we'll be doing, right?
Yeah, and the, uh, the.
I think Cindy wants, uh, Randy Brown's gotta be put on the LEPC and Alan.
We have to reappoint.
Sessler's gotta be put on the planning.
Emergency Management Planning Committee, Randy Brown.
So moved, second.
Tom Lanner, uh, Alan Sessler.
Right, and I think that's it.
All those in favor?
Yeah, and then the chief is updating his, his appointment list because he's lost people and he's got people coming and going, so we'll have that at a future meeting.
The revolving door. Okay.
Thanks.
So, next up fifteen A, is this a permit? Is that why this is in front of us?
Yeah.
All right, doesn't look like a permit, boys, but I, uh, the, um,
We just need a parade permit.
I need a parade permit for the Southwick Farm Parade, which is actually being partially run by the Southwick Civic Fund, so I will need someone to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cindy, who's pulling the, uh, permit with Mass DOT for the.
I do.
We do.
Yeah, yeah, we already got all that in, so we're good to go. You want to sign this? What do you want to do? Now, we're good. I'll keep this. I could need another flyer. All right, and after that.
Gotta figure out the route. Same thing, you haven't changed nothing, you're ending here.
Yeah, same. Everything's the same that we had given you.
Okay, we got it.
Does it take a couple of weeks to get back? Most of the time? Yeah, that's fine.
We're doing it anyway.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's a funny discussion. Uh, Bob Paul Valeri, apparently back in the day, was a Hellion.
A shocker.
Shocker, and I knew that growing up. Uh, he raced cars at Riverside Park and, boy, you know, that tire met many offender. So, I said to him, well, we're, you know, we're selectmen and we're putting this parade on no matter what. Who needs those state permits? And he looks at me and goes, Joe, we gotta do everything by the book. I, I got a guy that was a troublemaker all his life telling me that, Joe, it's all gotta be by the book. It was shocking.
See, I've tried playing everything by the book so far.
Hasn't worked well, yeah.
We're having a parade.
Oh, that's what I said. Yeah, he just, Joseph, you can't do that. I'm like, Bob, it's a shock coming from you. You know, he's, he's softening up. I don't get it. What's he, like seventy-eight? Okay, so next up is the, uh, Southwood Rotary Steak Roast. And is this just an FYI?
Yeah, it's an invitation.
I missed the HVAC. I thought, okay, we can talk about that later. All right, so this is an invitation for the, uh, Rotary Steak Roast. It's going to be held at the VFW eight seventy-two at one eighty-one Point Grove Road. Uh, it's a great, uh, event. Tickets are twenty-five dollars at the door. You can also pick them up at, uh, I believe Southwick Forest normally has about a hundred of them sitting in stock. And they're going to recognize that first responders are police, firefighters and EMTs, and our emergency management departments. Uh, comes with, uh, meal includes a steak, a baked potato, corn salad rolls, dessert, plus two drink coupons.
And you should have a conflict because your board meeting is on the eighteen.
Yes, that's wonderful. So, that's where you can get your tickets. Enjoy the show, folks. All right, and up, I don't have it in front of me, was the HVAC. Came in at how much money?
Oh, about a little over thirteen for the repairs, so.
Ta-da!
Uh, Bob is, you know, we don't need the reserve now. We'll need one.
Someday.
Later in the fall.
Yep.
We'll need one later in the fall, probably end of the second quarter, beginning of the third, depending on how expenses are tracking, because, but, you know, we have one stage running here.
Right.
And I sent you an email, so you guys know it, so.
We're aware and, and the warranty is.
So, Joe and Bob spoke today and we spoke, and so they're, they're off and running to order the necessary parts to make sure we have them in place within the next couple of weeks, so we'll be able to finish the year out and start the next year.
Yes, and the warranty on the new one is just for.
They're just a year. Even, even the other, even the other one, when, when they were all done before, that was from lightning damage. We went through, did a search, and those were not, that was a lightning claim. That was not regular general fund money.
Understood.
But it was one of those things, because remember, we, we even had lightning radios damaged before.
Yes, we did. And that, that was three years ago. I had them check.
Actually, knock on wood, but the lightning hasn't been bad in terms of damaging things this year. Plus, we did have our buildings.
Don't tell that to the goddamn Congamon.
We did have our buildings, uh, lightning protection installed on them.
We did.
So then, then it's working.
It's working, and we'll find out, because we got a, a hectic day coming to us tomorrow, it sounds like. Hopefully Carl didn't jinx us. Okay. All right, here's the stack post. All right, so, uh, the bid opening looks like is next.
Yeah, we, um, you have two documents. Uh, one is the minutes of the bid opening. I, uh, did that today for the library carpeting. And, uh, Bob and Diane also looked at the, uh, stuff, and they're making a recommendation to go forward with, uh, the award of it to Wagner Rug and Flooring for twenty-four thousand nine thirty-seven, which is within the appropriation that we have from town meeting and early funds reserved.
So moved.
So, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you ever think someday we just won't have a expense at that library?
No.
Maybe one year? No? It's, it's a dream. All right, and that's with provisional awards for contract for carpet installation, which we just did.
Yeah, that's, that was the recommendation from Bob.
All right.
Oh, so why did we sign it?
Just sign it. Just sign it hand over. That's all the same.
Sign it.
All right.
Sign this one.
Up next is a discussion in regards to, um, Westfield Gas and Electric and, what is this called? The Fiber?
Whip City Fiber.
Whip City Fiber.
Right, Dan Howard had just been, um, I had talked to him about a month ago, and then he followed up with some more information about how it's working and the service that they're providing, so. I know the issues come up, maybe with the new, uh, development they are going into the golf course.
Sure.
But I've given you the process of what it looks like to be an MLP and how some other towns have done it, so it's something for you to look at, and if you're interested, you could probably extend an invitation to a member of that organization to come down here and meet with you and go over the issue.
Let's do that. Let's just have the discussion anyways, whether we do it or not. Um, let's just talk to them, just to see what it's really about.
So you would like them to come down to a board meeting?
Yeah, because, you know, we're gonna get to who owns the poles and, and talking to Doug the other day is much more involved than just going, yep.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Oh, absolutely. There's a, there's a review.
Yeah. So what do you think?
I've already had people reach out to me, that, uh, one was a former Westfield resident, and his son still lives in Westfield, who just made the transition to, uh, whatever they call Whip City Fiber, uh, ecstatic, you know, about, about that.
My in-laws did it.
And he said, whatever we can do, if this is possible for Southwick, he would strongly encourage it. So, I don't think it's, I think we should, I think we should have that discussion, but, you know, when you're talking about two votes and you're talking about forming a municipal light.
On paper.
On paper, but, but is there a cost? What's the cost of that? Is there an annual renewal?
Right, oh, yeah, there's a lot more than just.
There's hidden, hidden things.
I recall a sewer situation that, uh, came back and tickled us, so.
I think it's also a policy decision by this board, right?
Right.
If you, you start having another governmental entity, you know, if we form a municipal light organization as a governmental entity, even if you contracted out, now you've got the government directly competing with the incumbent provider. Granted, the incumbent provider is practically, for intensive purposes, a monopoly in our town, right? But it is a discussion to have, and it's, it's, it's a philosophical one as one as a service one. I, and I'm also familiar with folks that have gotten the Whip City Fiber. It is fantastic, right, and.
And it's just internet service.
Uh, it's just internet service, but that's the trend, right? This, you know, you call it.
You can plug that in on a screen now and it's like a TV.
They call it over the top, right? So you get, you don't have TV service anymore. Everything's over the internet, whether it's.
Internet and air, you know.
Philo or, or YouTube TV or whatever, you know? But it's certainly, as a board, this is not something that, it's not a very easy decision. It's something you need to discuss as a policy, whether you want to to get into that business.
You may need to reactivate your cable committee from the past.
But then, you know, but you also have to look at what, you know, there's also, it'd be interesting to see what the incumbent would have to say about this too.
Right, right.
They, they will not be pleased, right?
No, but they don't have to, you know, it's, it's not that easy.
Well, but.
They don't own the polls.
They don't own the polls.
Oh, Verizon?
Those are Verizon, EverSource polls.
Verizon, EverSource.
They, they just, they have their own.
Verizon wouldn't be excited.
Your cable company and internet provider that you're now under contract has their space on those polls too.
True, okay, so there you go, so.
Right, they're a tenant too.
So does broadband, correct?
That's what we.
Like Comcast. Oh, you're talking about municipal broadband.
Right, right.
They're on some of the polls as a tenant as well.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
They came to, the Mass Broadband Institute, not to be confused with Comcast Broadband product, because it's got the same name.
MBI, Mass Broadband is, they're on some of the polls too, to get into town and out of town.
To go through our town, out to the hill towns.
To the hill towns, right.
Right, in those hill towns, they're very, they are working out deals with Whip City Fiber all over these other hill towns.
Which, it absolutely makes sense.
They don't have a Comcast at this point.
Correct, absolutely. And one of them did opt to go with Comcast. Comcast did come in to provide that.
You end up, it's, some of these, these other communities that have to put that infrastructure up, there is those large upfront capital costs that have to be spread over time under a payment system.
What is that called? It's some kind of schedule. That's the word. But yeah, I mean, it's just something we should really talk through as a board, right, and, and decide if that's something.
I mean, we got some people on that committee clipping in the back there on that committee.
Okay.
And Mugsy.
So sometime after, um, sometime just before the snow falls.
Okay, just to let you, by then, Dan will have retired, because he just announced his retirement. I just, yeah.
Boy, oh, boy, they're dropping weight for this. Must not a good package. All right.
All right, so I'll, I'll let them know to send us some dates. What, what are you thinking, Joe? Uh, October, November, December, when will you?
Uh, November looks really good.
November, okay.
Select board goals as of June fourth.
I removed several.
Did you?
Are those under, Cindy, are those under action? Let's see. Here.
All right.
There, action.
So it looks like number eight union agreements were all set?
Right now.
Right now.
Come on over and find mine.
Um, the deputy, yeah, number ten.
Yeah.
Number twelve. May God rest our souls. Uh, thirteen is okay, fourteen, fifteen, it, I hear is connected.
Yep, right behind sixty there.
They paved the road.
Do you think, uh?
And did the grass.
Can you, when you email her tomorrow, Russ, why don't you ask if you're gonna have the first flush?
I don't have six months.
Maybe that'll be Monday, after.
Yeah, you got the first flush, or maybe you'll get the gold toilet seat. What do you think, Russ, huh? Remember the gold toilet seat?
It'll be probably, Mr. Fox, just sit there, you're not speaking.
Yeah, well, I'll mention the gold, the gold seat.
See, last year was, we were lucky, right, because they had about twelve minutes before that meeting, they just finished paving the road.
Yeah, yes.
She asked me to say something. I said, your road's here, have a nice sun.
Oh, see, she.
It was perfect.
She was not happy with me.
No, I, and I'm cognizant of what it, I kind of kept it light, right? Oh, road's here, just in time.
All right, so you're marking up that one?
Yep, so number twenty, we can scratch out. Number twenty-three, we're working on that. Um, number twenty-five can go. All right.
Number, um, are you looking for updates on anything?
Sure, yeah, keep on going.
Where to go? Bear with me.
Here.
Number eleven, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, Carl scheduled me for something.
Nice.
Yeah, so I have a meeting with all the department heads, right, to kind of talk about some of the vulnerable.
Several.
Several. Some of the department heads. So basically, one guy's gonna show up besides Carl.
Yeah.
And, um, we're gonna go over the vendor study that was done.
Yeah.
And some proposed, some thoughts on proposed direction.
The next phase, the next phase to go to another community.
Try to go get more money to implement what we need to implement.
Show me the money.
Correct.
So that's good, that's moving.
Yep, that's moving. Kind of like that.
Yep.
Uh, sidewalks, we're, we're looking at those on depot. That's been budgeted. I don't know when they're gonna get to it.
Um, I just drove by, they're not done yet.
I noticed, yeah.
Yeah, the town council is working with, uh, Randy on the descriptions of the easements.
Yep, understood.
Could, could we take it a step further now, since we've been talking about this for a couple of years now? And we actually funded it based on what we were told, and went out and got easements, and I know that, uh, we're, I'm, we're probably gonna say, well, we got legalese, legal issues to clear, uh, clear up first, but I'd like to.
But we have the vote.
I'd like to see if we couldn't have this sidewalk done before the snow flies this year. You know, to connect to the rail trail. Uh, it's a dangerous situation, but this is also an opportunity to get people off the rail trail down into the business section.
Yeah, with the leaves are changing.
Yep, I will pass that along to, uh, council and DPW.
And ask, ask for, uh, could we ask for a timetable? Is that?
Sure.
All right, to the board?
Yes. Just make sure it's coming from Russell.
So obviously, if, um, our issue would be is, even if Mass DOT is thinking about doing that as a beta or, you know, as a sample project, if it's gonna be later than this schedule, we want to use the money we already have appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been.
Mass DOT took an interest in this project for some reason?
Uh, maybe as a sample location.
For what?
How come every time?
We go to fund it.
We go to discuss like paving.
Is there a bug in here?
Agwaam line to.
Yeah.
To Calabreses, we can't do it, but then the state comes and does it.
Right.
And then.
It was before Calabreses, cause I live across from Calabreses, get that correct.
But to be clear, it's also taken them 18 months to.
Stripes and lines.
Lines on college highway.
Oh, that, that was under my thing under new business.
Steal your thunder.
Yeah, you got a gallon of paint, we're going out tonight?
We could do it. All right. Carl, we need to borrow your truck. It's already got paint on it.
Yeah, but not that color.
Well, now it'll, it'll be complimentary.
I, I'm, but seriously, uh.
This is gonna be white?
I don't know if you guys noticed it, but I've noticed it the past few, couple of months. People aren't getting all the way over because they're hesitant, because they don't know where the lines are.
Can we have the safety officer call Mass DOT?
I, I.
We've done that.
Yeah, he carries more weight than anyone.
Well, what are you saying?
What I.
I, I gotta be comparable.
I, I'm wondering if, if we have several issues with Mass DOT. Maybe it's time that Senator Humison, Representative Tiga, and we have a little road trip up to North Hampton to discuss line striping, speed on college highway.
What's his name, Scott, right? Wouldn't he be Stegner, Steg, Stegman, Steg?
Stegman. Whose family used to live in Southwick on Davis Road.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but that didn't get us anywhere. No, they, Stegman's lived on Davis Road. Um, went to school with, uh, two of his sisters.
That's the Harvard of Southwick.
That could be the problem, that he went to school with two of his sisters.
Well, my brother, never mind, anyway.
That's why I'm not exactly.
No, he retired, he, Stegman's gone, he's been gone for a while.
And also about the, the, the impact the Westfield Bridge is having on, on Sunny Side.
We should have, do you know who is our current Mass DOT guy for Southwick?
Can you get him in here?
Maybe we should take him to Murphy's for lunch.
No, just have him come for a meeting, discuss everything.
That too.
I have an open invitation to come out.
They probably won't come.
I know, but it's worth a letter.
But the last time we went up there as a, with the, uh, it was Mike Knappick at the time and, and, uh.
Take the senior bus.
It was, and I think it was Nick, right?
I'm driving again.
Well, it's coming up Thanksgiving.
I am, can't wait.
Yeah. If it's, yeah, well, it's, in November, I can go before November, I'm on. Okay.
All right.
All right, so old library reuse.
Uh, wait with this, okay, what, yeah, where are you, Joe?
We're still number one.
We're still number one.
You're on number one.
Yep.
We're still on the sidewalk.
Oh, you're on number two.
We, we detoured.
Yeah, we're all over the.
How are we in the library and they were still?
Uh, Ben, Ben has, uh, developed an updated draft, but he has not finalized it to send to me that will both reflect both pathways authorized by both town meetings.
Good, cause also.
That casino's opening soon and we're gonna probably lose Ben.
I'm gonna lose Ben, why?
To the casino?
Or long lunches, I don't know, I mean.
Okay.
He's not producing, he's not producing too quickly now, so what's gonna happen when a casino opens?
They were indicted, no, he's actually.
Incisions again?
They've done very well in the last month.
Ah, I gotta talk to that guy. All right.
We may have to go and meet.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go meet Ben.
On Friday?
I think, no, we'll wait a week. I ain't going anywhere near Springfield next Friday.
Yeah.
This Friday.
This, oh, this Friday, yeah.
Yeah, number three.
At least we'd have a place to park.
Well, yeah. They probably got a tunnel, they probably have a tunnel that goes right through and up. They got a special handshake and everything. All right, number three, mandates for stormwater and signage.
Oh, boy.
Funds voted for federal N O I preparation set aside.
Well, we know Randy's working on it.
He's working on it. Economic development.
Well.
It's a long breath.
Right.
Yeah. Congamon Road reconstruction.
Digging.
They're working on it.
Well, that's commenced.
Commenced, uh, with completion in 2000, estimated 2019 finish.
Yep. Net metering.
Yep, contracts are executed. I think we could probably take that off.
Take that off, yeah. Wally Park Phase 33, I mean three.
Um, the.
Lights are ordered, right?
Yes, the parking lights have been ordered.
Wonderful. Be very exciting.
And the vendor to install is under contract.
So, can I ask the stupid question? So when is December 28th and there's eight inches of snow, will those lights be on at night?
No.
I, I, we know that's no, but.
Well, because I wanna get, if you follow that down.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, to.
Light switch?
Number 16, which I will be asking about, because we did go fairly smooth, but that should be part of that.
Yes, all right, so.
Right, I think Doug, you were gonna work with Bobby, right?
Number 11.
That was gonna be done.
We talked about the community compact, number 13, where you are lightning speed on the 250th anniversary committee. It is amazing. I can understand there's a new chairman in town for that.
There is, Mister Chairman.
So you could put down committee, committee form.
I nominated Jim Putnam to be chairman of that committee last night and he accepted.
Never go to the restroom.
He is the new chairman of that.
Wow, that's two huge appointments for Mister Putnam inside of a couple of weeks.
Well, I saw that article and it said, he is the person.
That is an honor for, for him. He was appointed to the vice chair of the big E.
Of the big E. Trustees.
The big E, yeah.
Yeah.
Congratulations to our moderator.
No, that's, that's really cool.
No, no, it's awesome. No, it's, it's quite an honor, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, Jim, Jim is the right person. He's retired now. He can focus on that.
That's pretty cool.
Not someone that's juggling.
No, no, absolutely. That's awesome.
And he did a great job. He took over last night and did a great job and kept things focused and we've already tentatively scheduled, uh, the date for the parade in 2020.
So you get her started on the permits, she'll have them just in time.
Well, we're, yes. It's gonna be a template from the animal parade.
Well, we might get the permit for that parade right around the time we get the one for the 250.
Okay, so on that one, we put committee formed and state funds acquired.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Sure. Number 16.
And the next one, committee has, the committee has been formed on that one too.
Yeah.
And they are meeting.
Tomorrow night.
No, Thursday night.
Thursday night.
And they're gonna be going over the survey, the survey questions?
Survey questions and, uh.
And the RFP.
RFP.
To be released.
Right.
To secure quotes for a.
Consultant.
Consultant to be the, um, support vendor for the, uh, the committee.
And I'm, I'm confident the chairman, uh, uh, based on the great work that was done by the previous committee that we will be able to accomplish. Dennis Clark wasn't there, so I made him chairman.
Of the open space?
Open space. So, uh, he's been working diligently on it and, uh, I think we'll be able to wrap it up.
Interested if citizens are helping him?
In, right, very short time. We won't be taking two years to accomplish this.
Nice. All right, sixteen, Wally Park maintenance.
Fifth, what about 15?
We've already talked about it.
Okay, so take, take it off, cause it is done.
Yeah, we crossed it off.
They crushed the old tanks already, so they're light.
They are, yeah. So Wally Park maintenance developed with building ground supervision.
We just need to check with Mister Johnson. They were supposed to have lit, a literal binder on how to turn off that park and turn on that park. By, by, no one but town people doing it, or their contractors. No one standing over their shoulder, when it's time to shut the park, we shut the park. When it's time to open the park, we open the park. And secure it for the winter so that nothing untoward happens.
Well, the securing part's gonna be a nightmare, I think, so, but.
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 At least we're supposed to have a binder.
Bathroom's gonna be locked and winterized and.
But they had a second mechanism to double lock the doors so that.
Yes.
Cause there was some keying questions around that, but just so that this year, my understanding is it was smooth, the opening was fairly smooth, there was no, no issues.
Major issues.
We wanna, want that to be repeatable and Mister Johnson's done a commendable job. I just wanna make sure we have that binder on the shelf.
Yep.
So that Mister Johnson or his designee or down the road, someone else can do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that, to your point about, there's gonna be a switch somewhere to turn off those flights for the winter, right?
I would hope.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, I'll talk to Bobby.
Thank you.
ALS transition program.
Transitioning.
We're transitioning.
Under.
Yeah, we did the, uh, reappointments as needed. DPW snow and ice removal policy.
You adopted that.
Okay.
You wanna take that off?
Yeah. Maintenance for private roads.
Uh, do you wanna take 19 off? We still have some neighbors to meet with.
Oh, we do, for the snow and ice, right. DPW meeting with neighborhoods. Okay, yeah, no, leave that on, I'm sorry. 19 stays on and we gotta make that phone call shortly. Get a few of them in here.
21?
Cell tower RFP.
Uh, that's still, um.
It's unbent.
Behind the casino.
Yeah, no, it's, it's coming. He's, he, remember that some, one of the two parcels was in a tax title issue and they just finished resolving.
They cleared that up, good.
With the developer and their attorney.
Nice. 22, transfer station recycling.
I'm going, I know he's been meeting with the, uh, school. He's trying to get the schools to be, uh, to increase their recycling. I've seen emails.
Right.
Did you get that information you had requested from me, from MMA?
I did, I think, right, the copy of the business cards?
Yeah, Casella and the other one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've done nothing.
That's fine.
Disappointed in myself. All right, uh, fire department apparatus, we are good with.
So we bought a ladder truck.
We bought a ladder truck. It's red and it's coming with lettering on it.
Even says Southwick, right?
Still have the.
Well, no, no, don't, don't go there. We don't know if it's gonna say Southwick.
You still have. You still have the.
We still have the pumper to deal with. He said there's plenty of money left in that budget, so we're, we're good.
I'm good.
The 14,000 difference, he's gonna buy some small, um.
Loose equipment.
Loose equipment, couple air fresheners and it'll be good to go. All right. 24, municipal building feasibility, we are working on that.
Uh, Ben, uh, it was finalizing the language with Jim.
Yeah.
Uh, Maisik, for the attachment to the RFP. So that, it, it, you know, that should go out the next couple of weeks.
Wonderful. That's memorial policy, we've taken care of.
Mm-hmm. Uh, road rename.
Road rename, 91 projects.
Going to be, the police are gonna be having a public informational session on Wednesday night, the 26th of September.
Yep.
So if you wanna just put down the.
26th of December, is that what you said?
PD, 926 info session.
Oh, 926.
And then after that session, then it will eventually make it to you for the formal hearing.
Understood.
Under the town code and state law to rename the roads.
Understood. All right.
Like I said, these are a lot of things that the different department heads and Ben have been working on and and they've really ramped up their asses and issues, okay?
Wonderful. All right, that's all I got under that. I'm not gonna worry about that. Um, we did the library carpet bid, Whip City Fiber we talked about, updated that, we did that, we did goals and objectives.
Yep.
Discussion of public space booking, we'll deal with that next week.
Yep.
Um, what else do we have under old business? Anybody have anything?
Well, just back to the, uh, line striping.
Yeah.
Speed in college highway.
Yeah, I got that for the Mass DOT.
And that, uh, whether or not we want to, uh, meet with them.
Site tour, you wanna site tour?
Or either meet with, if they will come here, that'd be great.
Who's that?
Mass DOT.
We'll ask the state rep and senator whether or not they wanna come here to go over these issues as a site tour, or whether or not we're going to go to district.
Make a motion for Russ Fox to deal with that.
I can go back up there because Mister Stegman has left.
Okay. Can you second that?
Sure.
I'll second, all those in favor, aye. So Russ, you run with that. Before your season picks up.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the license plate today.
Uh, Russ wants to go down there, wants to go to the state and do all that running around. I'm very busy right now and I'm sure you are too, and Russ might have a few extra minutes.
Yeah, when you arise, I will gladly join.
Yes, that's wonderful. All right, anything else on your old business?
Um, I, I've mentioned this before.
Mention it again, please.
The water line to the old cemetery.
Oh, what's up with that?
It's, it's not working.